Okay, we up and running? Okay, it is Tuesday, March 1st, 2022. We'll call the meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning up. Okay, minutes and reports received and filed?
We do not have any.
Okay, Commissioner Committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events.
It looks like we got a Regional Economic Partnership Board and Investor Meeting tomorrow afternoon at 3:00. Coal County Communities Thursday morning at 7:00. Extension Council Meeting Thursday evening. Eastside Business Association Wednesday or Friday morning. Osage Bend and Taos Fish Fries this weekend. Is there any on the west side that you know of right offhand? Tiger Fest is Saturday. St. Martin's this weekend, too?
Yeah.
St. Michael's and St. Russellville. I think that was about it.
Do we have an ARPA advisory meeting this afternoon?
I don't have one on my calendar.
No, I don't think we actually got it scheduled.
We need to set one.
And we sent the application and sent it out and I said in there that, you know, we gave them a week to come up with some suggestions and then we scheduled it.
Okay, so we'll schedule for next week. Okay.
I show EFSP and ARPA United Way meeting on Thursday, or at least online. I'm invited to. That's all I have.
Okay. Well, I think Nick is doing a hazmat C-101 regional meeting tomorrow. And on Thursday, Communities. Friday, I'm on Kwas because Austin's gone, so I'll be on with Hal. Saturday, Sons of the Union Veterans Meeting. Saturday is Sunday, the Daughters of American Revolution. We're going to present a proclamation as their 125th anniversary. So that's all I've got. Any Commission comments? Bids and contracts. Renewal one of cleaning contract for Public Works.
This is the first renewal with Classic Cleaning who has the contract for cleaning over at Public Works. They did want to increase their percentage to 4%, which would make the annual cost $18,616. Both Greg and Eric were fine with the increase and they're satisfied with their work. My recommendation is to continue our contract with Classic Cleaning.
I'm fine with it. Make a motion to approve contract renewal with?
Classic Cleaning.
Who is it? Classic? There it is, Classic Cleaning.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Renewal two of inmate welfare products contract Sheriff's Department.
This is the second renewal with Bob Barker Company who has a contract for providing our inmate welfare products. They have agreed to maintain their current pricing and the Sheriff's Department is pleased with their service and product.
Good.
Yep.
All right, make a motion to renew the contract with Bob Barker.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Somebody had to do that.
Let's see. Do we have a contract amendment for the lean and title search services?
Yep. This is with Coal County Abstract. They agreed to keep their pricing the same that they have in the past and Larry's pleased with their services. So just signing an amendment.
Okay. Yep. Make a motion to... Is this a renewal as well then? Because it says amendment up here.
It's an amendment. We're just extending the expiration.
Okay. I'll make a motion, sign the amendment extending the expiration date with Coal County Abstract and Title Company.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Bit awards. The 2022-08 for ambulance.
So I think what I'd like to do is I'll go ahead and just give you guys a statement and then I'll turn it over to Jessica for her piece of it and we'll just kind of go from there if that sounds good.
So just a little bit of summary of how we've gotten here. As you all recall, in late September 2021, you authorized me to initiate the purchase of three new ambulances for our agency. At the time, we agreed this process provided a unique opportunity to design the next generation of Coal County ambulance. Given this directive, I felt it was imperative to engage my staff who utilize these vehicles each day to play the leading role in researching, developing, and designing these ambulances. Through hours of research and discussion, a core group of staff members developed key areas of focus for this build process. These areas of focus included improving safety, patient comfort and access, increasing workspace, and improving capabilities in adverse weather. Once the areas of focus for this design were established, I contacted three local ambulance dealerships who represent a total of six different ambulance manufacturers. The goal was to provide an in-person demonstration of the capabilities and qualities of each of their products. Each one of these in-person demonstrations were conducted in a public forum open to public, all of our staff, media, and elected officials. After conducting a product review, test drives, visit to production sites, and reference interviews, my staff and I embarked on the long process of building our specifications for this purchase. To ensure a fair and unbiased design, my staff and I wrote these specifications utilizing open source to public documents with zero input from any ambulance manufacturer. Although developing specifications in this manner required arduous work, the results produced an ambulance specification designed completely by the professionals who will be using the finished product once delivered. The completed ambulance specifications were then placed out for competitive bid per our county policy in late January. Any ambulance manufacturer who met the minimum requirements were welcome to submit a bid. The open bid period concluded Thursday, February 24th. Three sealed bids and one letter of non-interest were received. Each bid was opened in a public forum and recorded by Jessica, the county purchasing agent. Guided by county policy and state statute, I'm obligated to recommend the contract be awarded to the manufacturer with the lowest bid, lowest and best bid, excuse me. Therefore, I review the material and contents of each bid and reach the following conclusions. Each received bid overwhelmingly complies with the specifications of the design and meets the overall objectives identified by my staff. Each bidder provided safety testing data that meets or exceeds national standards. Each bidder agreed to the delivery timeline of 365 days after receipt of chassis. Each bidder provided reference of quality craftsmanship and customer service. Pricing, emergency services supply representing Osage Ambulance, total price for three ambulances was $787,140 or $262,380 per unit. Feldfire, representing Wheel Coach, their total price was $825,336 or $275,000... excuse me, $275,112 per unit. And American Response Vehicles, representing AEV, with a total price of $826,482 or $275,494 per unit. Based on these conclusions, there is no identifiable difference in quality, safety, or other factors considering when determining a best manufacturer. Therefore, I must honor Coal County EMS's demonstrated history of selecting the lowest bid in the absence of other variables and recommend emergency services supply representing Osage Ambulance be awarded bid 2022-08. Questions?
And that would be for the four-wheel drive?
Correct.
Jassy.
Each of those bids also bid the two-wheel drive and the differences were comparable for each of the three?
Yeah. The difference between the two-wheel drive option and the four-wheel drive option on that truck chassis, the largest difference between the two was $8,300.
Yeah, and after our last three weeks of snow and ice, I don't even want to consider the two-wheel drive.
We didn't have any problems. I mean, for the difference in the price between the two and four-wheel drive, I'm fine with the four-wheel drive, but we didn't have any problems with the snow.
I would say that currently, we do operationally implement some changes. So our county crews, who are traditionally in the Demir's ambulances, which don't have chain capabilities, will move into an Osage product when we do get or are forecasted to get more than two inches of snow. That requires the crews to move equipment back and forth and requires them to come to headquarters a little bit. We have not had any problems with that, but we do have that process change. And I will say that for the difference over the lifetime of an ambulance of saving, you know, at maximum $8,300, we would very easily spend that in maintaining and servicing auto-chain systems on a two-wheel drive ambulance.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think I'm kind of surprised how well they do get around in the weather.
Yeah.
So that was just my point is that we didn't... It's not something we have to have, but if you're going to go to the truck, body on it, and there's, what, $2,500 difference?
Right.
It's probably worth having it, so.
Yes.
And I have some questions about the... One other that we visited with, Pinnacle did not submit a bid. Talked to Eric about it. He submitted the letter to me that they had sent with something with the timelines and stuff, so I really don't have any other questions.
No. And we had one that we didn't even look at their ambulances. So to me, I learned a lot looking at the ambulances, you know? It's... They're a complicated...
Well, we looked at some last time we bid them. We went up to St. Louis and looked at some of them and we were invited to go look at theirs, so we've seen them. We've seen different ones.
I learned a lot more this time.
It's because you're retired. You've got more time for that.
That's right.
Side of the brain.
Yeah, but when we went and looked, I wasn't retired, so anyway. Hey, okay, we digressed.
As usual.
I'm looking for yesterday's.
I have a copy for you.
Oh, this, here.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I have. I'm still a paper person.
Do you want it attached to the?
Where Eric broke down all three and...
I'll make a motion to award the 2022-08 ambulance purchase contract to Emergency Services Supply.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
For 2022-09 Pipes, we had three vendors who submitted responses. Our recommendation is to award it to the lowest and best bid in each category with available material. You guys should have all the bid tabs attached.
Yeah, it's attached.
The one thing I'd have to add is the metal pipe is substantially higher, about 70% give or take. We did include in our budget, added some extra money for price increases. It's not enough to cover that. However, we don't buy all of our pipe just in metal. We buy plastic, too, so.
Availability is pretty slow with plastic pipe.
Yeah, so it's going to be an interesting year to see how that works out, but that is a factor going forward. And you'll find that in some of the other items, too, that we bid with price increases.
A lot of them had a little bit of increase.
Yeah, I'm good with lowest and best.
Yeah, I am, too.
Aye, as well.
All right, make a motion to go with the lowest and best for the pipes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
2022-10 Asphalt Materials.
For this one, we had three vendors who submitted responses and our recommendation, again, is to award it to the lowest and best in each category with available material.
Good.
Yep.
Make a motion, go with the lowest and best available on the asphalt materials.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
2022-11 Sign Materials.
For sign materials, we had three vendors who submitted responses and our recommendation is to go with the lowest and best in each category with available materials.
Make a motion, go with lowest and best on the sign materials.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
2022-12 Cold Milling and Asphalt Paving Services.
This one, willing, had one vendor who submitted a response, and so our recommendation is to award it to Jefferson Asphalt.
Is that all we usually get for the cold milling?
We've had Higgins Asphalt in the past and they just didn't bid it for whatever reason.
Okay. Is this about where we thought it would be?
Now, this, just so you know, this is just for if we need to hire them on just a little spot basis. Now, we will bid our annual overlay and chip seal and all that work. That's coming out for bid in the next few weeks. So this is just miscellaneous pickup work here and there where we need their services.
Okay. Make a motion to award the cold milling and asphalt paving services to Jefferson Asphalt.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 2022-03 Road Materials.
On this one, we had five vendors who submitted responses and our recommendation is to award it to the lowest and best in each category near the work site with available material.
Okay, good. Make a motion to award the road materials to lowest and best and closest.
Yep.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 2022-04 Blades.
For the blades, we had three vendors who submitted a response and the recommendation, again, is to award it to the lowest and best in each category with available material.
Make a motion to award the blades to lowest and best in each category.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
2022-05 Mosquito Spray Materials.
We had two vendors that submitted a response and the recommendation, again, is to award it to lowest and best in each category with available.
I'm just going to record this next time. Make a motion to award the mosquito spray materials to lowest and best bid in each category.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
2022-06 Vegetation Spray Materials.
We had one vendor that submitted a response and our recommendation is to award it to nutrient ag solutions.
Good. Make a motion to award vegetation spray materials to nutrient ag solutions.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 2022-07 Leased Equipment.
We had three vendors who submitted a response and our recommendation is to award it to the lowest and best in each category with available equipment.
Make a motion to award leased equipment to the lowest and best bid in each category with available equipment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Well, that will go to Nick. Awards and signing of grant agreements with Midmo Regional Planning from Homeland Security. This is one I hopefully have a stamp on.
That's right. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
This morning, we have quite a few. First is, all of these are through R-SOC, and the first one is for generator load testing. That's our sustainment through our generators to make sure that they're at factory standard for load tests. The second is for ballistic vests. This is for the fire department, for Jeff City Fire, so that they can have some protection as they are a part of some special teams and also response to civil disturbance. The next one, number 18, is the hazmat response team and some of the project materials that they have for sustainment. I know gloves, gowns, things that are going out of stock because of they wear out during their lifetime, especially if they're not used, so R-SOC awarded that one. And last but not least, this is control number 12. The last one is for the MEAC, has cellphone services that go to the MEAC, and this is actually a sub-award, so this will take care of... It was previously mentioned as AT&amp;T, and it's actually AT&amp;T and Verizon, so this will take care of both to pay the bills for our MEAC.
So you've got two on there for MEAC. You've got subscriber services, supply grants, and then a MEAC equipment grant. Are those just lumped together then?
Is the total of that in the $16,100?
Okay. I don't know.
We've just got five listed on our agenda.
Yeah.
They're all together, though. You've got five different grants.
I only have the ones, the ones I sent in the email are the ones I printed out here.
Okay.
So that might, the email might have more of a descriptive... Might be more descriptive than what is on the sheets.
There's the subscriber equipment. There's the generator load, ballistic, HSRT. There's a MEAC equipment grant that... It just says equipment grant. So is that a different one? Or is that?
I might be missing one in the email.
You got five there, Debbie?
Yeah.
Okay.
What's the... Oh, I think it's this one, the M3. Yeah, that's the one. Yep, okay, so this is the one we're missing. I'm sorry about that.
Okay.
I thought I printed them all out this morning.
If we don't approve it, that's tough.
It's almost impossible to receive funding if you don't approve it.
Now, are these all 100%?
Yes, they're covered through R-SOC. That's 100%.
We like that.
Okay, I'm going to try to hammer these all five at the same time.
Yeah.
Make a motion to award and sign the grant agreements with Midmo RPC and Homeland... or from Homeland Security for the EMA HSRT grant, EMA ballistic vest grant, EMA generator load testing grant, MEAC subscriber services and supplies grant, MEAC equipment grant.
Second. Second, 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 second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just need one signature from Sam on these, right?
And initial each page.
Yeah, I know. Did we get my stamp in yet?
Might be a little...
Okay, we've got unfinished business, Sheriff.
Is Brian here? Say, this is Brian's fault.
Oh, Brian said he didn't need to be here.
Because I know, that's why I'm running there on him. So y'all signed this, actually, you signed this agreement a month or so ago, increasing our internet. Come to find out, it's actually a little more expensive. It's actually an extra $52 or something more, so it's in our budget, but I just ask that you sign this again.
$52 a month, is that right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I'll make a motion to sign the Lumen adjusted contract, which increases the cost by $52 per month?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, man. It really was a Brian fault, but I like blocking some of his stuff, so.
Okay. New business accounts payable review.
I might be in this one, so. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve accounts payable review, pending review.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Grant Street, City, County Cooperative Project concurrence of bid award.
So, as you know, we've worked with the city with this cooperative project and, I believe it was earlier this year, we agreed to and paid $500,000 towards this project. I'll turn it over to David to discuss the project and the procedure going forward.
Yeah, so the project is actually going to install a five-foot wide sidewalk along the western side of Grant Street from McCarty Street up into the park and tie into the sidewalk and trail system there by the swimming pool, which then connects into the rest of the park. Along with that, we're going to be improving the stormwater system, particularly down in the area of Hugh Street, with some new inlets and adding an inlet by Lake Street to prevent the water from crossing the street there. There'll be a mill and overlay of the entire street, and then actually, as it goes into the park, the street section will be widened with a median and some street lighting that gets put in there. So that's kind of the project intention would be for the contractor to start in April and most likely be finished sometime in August. It'll kind of include closing the road at three different points during the construction, and so there'll be some detouring, but hopefully the majority of that will be taken care of before things really get fired up at the park in terms of the pool and the amphitheater events. So I'd be happy to answer any questions about that project.
Is that including sidewalks, David?
Yes, there'll be a sidewalk on the western side.
Okay.
A five-foot sidewalk is wider than the normal sidewalk, or?
Our city standard is five feet, except in residential areas. Our city code is a little bit disjointed in that regard. If you were building a new subdivision, you could get by with a four-foot sidewalk, but our city standard everywhere else is five feet.
You were able to fit that sidewalk in on the west side. That was kind of intricate, wasn't it?
Yeah, the right-of-way is not that wide, and so... And actually, the setbacks to the houses on the western side starts out relatively generously, but by the time you get down to the end is really pretty close. So the last house, 92 Grant Street, we actually had to move the sidewalk against the back of the curb and build a retaining wall to get it to squeeze in there, and we're still about eight feet away from their front porch, so it's pretty tight.
Yeah, I just knew. We had people who walked to the concerts because parking is... And they said, "Man, we got to have sidewalks."
Yeah, yeah.
One thing I'll add is this is a true cooperative project. J.C. Parks is also participating in it.
Right.
And I believe it's 100...
Right, so, yeah. Just roughly, rough figures, you guys have $500,000 in it. Parks has $100,000, and then the city's capital improvement, sales tax joint project account has about $200,000 in it.
Yeah, I know Councilman Kemna's been interested in when we were going to do this.
Right, and I think Eric in his memo did make mention that our intention was for this to be first read at the council at their meeting last week and second read at their count, at the meeting next week, but I think Councilman Kemna suspended the rules and they went ahead and voted on it, and the contract is actually approved from the city's end already, so.
Yep, I'm going to go ahead and get rolling.
Yeah, I...
Excellent.
So I don't know if...
You got a contract in or we just got a...
The city's handling all that. Typically, in the past, you've voted to concur an award to... And we didn't even... The Concrete Solutions is the contractor here, and they've done a lot of work in the city and they're familiar with their process.
Right.
Like I said, it's already awarded to them by the city.
Yeah, they've done a couple of projects. They did the sidewalks here along the Baptist Building. They did a stormwater project over on Midland and a sidewalk project over by our transit facility along Miller and Chestnut Streets. So they've been kind of active in the city over the last three years or so.
So you need a motion to concur the bid award with Jefferson City for the Grant Street City-City Cooperative Project.
Yes.
That's my motion.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, County Park Fairgrounds Acres subdivision Greenway Trail Extension Discussion. Just had a couple more words.
In my memo, I had included a few aerial drawings, photos and drawings, to explain the project. This trail extension would go from the Fairgrounds Acres subdivision, which already has an extension from the roadway out to County Park property line, and connect it behind the ballpark down to the County Park Lake Trail Loop. And this project was attempted about five years ago or so and couldn't get things worked out, and so it was never, never followed through with. In our Parks Committee meeting in June of last year, we had the committee rank projects that they'd like to see done. This one ranked number three behind new bathrooms and a playground out there at County Park. Of those two projects, the bathroom and playground, we would pursue grants for those, and so those are really standalone. So this...
So, this brings this trail extension to the top as far as priority goes. We are proposing this as a 50-50 cost share. J.C. Parks will, will be the match on it. Right now, the estimate's at $66,700 and some change. So, our, our portion would be $33,350. The city, David Bangy's designing the project, they'll bid it, run it through their system. Parks, we've got just a draft agreement if you agree to move forward with it and they will, they will pay for the project upfront and we'll reimburse them at the end, exactly half of the final cost. Right now, it could be either our staff or city staff doing the inspection work and we'll kind of figure that as time comes and as we evaluate, evaluate our workloads. Like I said, this project had been talked about for a while, then put on the shelf and brought back up now that it became more of a priority for our Parks Committee in their ranking last summer. So, entertain any discussion and David, you could add anything else to perturb the conversation?
Yeah, I mean, I think you've covered it pretty well, Eric. I would certainly be willing to answer questions.
The developers of Covington Garden left a lot for this, right? From the, from the very beginning?
Actually, two, and that, is there two separate developers or one?
Right, so there's the Covington Gardens subdivision, which is the larger one kind of to the south, and then there's the Fairgrounds Acres subdivision, which is the little square up to the north. And so, in both cases, there was a lot left. In Covington Gardens case, it was a lot that was left for the trail to come through and then at Fairgrounds Acres, we actually required the contractor to leave an easement through there for the greenways because it was, you know, right next to the park and thought certainly it would be very nice to let those people have access to the park without having to go out and around.
I think it's a great quality of life improvement for the, especially for those folks, but for anybody who uses that trail. It's great.
It's an easy connection. It's right there, the park's right there. Now, that one drawing showed the impact area, approximately 300 homes would use this one. The other one, Covington Gardens, to the, to the east below the fire station, that's in place and that was done 10 years ago or so.
Right.
Connected that part of the subdivision. So, it connects the whole area and gives easy access to the park.
Great.
So, we would, or I recommend approval to move forward. In your approval, it would basically give us the go-ahead for the city to proceed and then once, once we bid the project, or about the timeframe of bidding, we'll bring the, the.
Development agreement.
Development MOU between us and Parks for you to sign to guarantee the funding reimbursement when the project's done.
Right.
And that's at the back of that email there for you.
Right, and we would look, the, the project is designed, since we had done this once before, the project is designed and so we would be, if you guys were willing, we would be ready to start advertising this next week and so would be able to have this in place by the end of the summer.
Funding for this, sorry, would come from the Hassan Sales Tax, the 15% portion that is dedicated towards Parks.
Okay.
Yep.
I have a motion to proceed with the County Park Fairground Acres Subdivision Greenway Trail Extension.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I'll stop initially. Discussion approval of J.C. Bike Loop signing on county roadways.
So, David brought this to me roughly a month ago or so, but we've talked in the past about it just in various opportunities. They've been working, the city's been working on a bike loop around town and that's shown in one of the drawings. A portion of that is already signed. The project David's working on is to sign the rest of it and part of this loop would go out into the county, specifically County Park Road and Rock Ridge Road. And the request is to place directional signing at intersections along the route into locations and those drawings are also shown in the, in the handout there. So, David, you got anything else to add on that?
Yeah, so this is a, a route that, when I first started working for the city 20 years ago, someone showed me this map and said, "This is, this is the route that we want." And so here, 20 years later, you know, perhaps we'll, we'll get there. But we started doing this, started signing this probably about six or seven years ago. Actually, it's been longer than that now. It's, part of it was signed when the, the bridge over the river was built. I guess that was already 10 years ago or so. So, that piece along West Main Street was done at that point in time when we did, redid Capitol Avenue, we added the bike lanes and so that would be signed as part of this loop. The actual Parks Department, a couple of years ago, we signed Ellis Boulevard and so it's kind of been sort of piece by piece, we've been working on this in conjunction with some other projects, but you know, ultimately, we think that we're at the point and have the funding available to, to finish the loop and so certainly would like to, like to try that. And as Eric indicated, you know, essentially what happens is we're bringing the, the trail down along Fairgrounds Road in front of the, the middle school out there and then would turn and come through County Park there by the lake and get up to Rock Ridge and need to turn to follow Rock Ridge out to Route C. So, basically that Rock Ridge, County Park area is where we're actually outside the city limits in the county and just need that to, to finish the loop. And the loop really was sort of designed around the fact that it sort of follows the ridge of what is the Where's Creek Drainage Basin. And so, in essence, it's the flattest route that we have in Jefferson City. Now, certainly it's not flat, but when you're considering all the hills in Jefferson City, this provides you a loop that is the flattest and so I think that's why it's been for these many years, sort of the path that's been laid out.
And city, you're gonna handle all the funding of this, bid the project, it'll be a contractor installing them, so.
Correct.
No cost to the county.
Are we going out to James Hensh's?
I'm sorry?
Are we going out to Hensh's?
Uh, well, if you took a little side trip, you could get there, you're pretty close.
He's a big.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. So, John, you gonna get some bicycles for some of your deputies?
Sure, I'm gonna get deputies first, but we'll talk. I was gonna ask, so you're just talking about signs, you're not talking about putting bicycle lanes?
Correct, just signs.
It's just signs.
Just to direct people, so if they're on this route, they know which direction they're gonna stay on this loop?
Correct.
Okay.
Right, so I mean, there's, there's various treatments throughout the, the area, certainly the Capitol Avenue area, East Capitol, there's actual bike lanes there. West Main Street, we have what's called share-o markings on the pavement as well as on Ellis, but the part that we're looking at now would just be signage. A lot of those pavement markings, the MUTCD sort of says that 35 mile an hour speed limit's probably about the maximum that you would want to have on the roadway and still use those markings. And so, we're actually 40 miles an hour on most of these roads and so it would just simply be signage. So, if a cyclist was on that route, we could just keep them on that route.
Okay.
I think it's a terrible idea pushing people out to Rock Ridge Road. I mean, it's curvy, hilly, and then you're putting signs up that say the bikes can use the whole road. It's, it don't make sense. I mean, if you wanna make it part of where they can ride the bikes, I just don't think putting, they can use the whole road on there, 'cause if you got people coming and you wanna get around them, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense making that part of the bike loop.
Yeah, in terms of the signage, I mean, ultimately what the guidance is that if the, the lane is 14 feet wide, then certainly there's space enough in that lane for the cyclist and the car to occupy the lane at the same time.
We've run into them on Route M and 179.
Sure.
And Route B and, so Route B's actually better now with the shoulders on it, but then.
Did you run into them or encounter them?
No, we encountered them. Well, country speak, we ran into them. So.
Knowing what the hills are like in this city and county, flat is better.
But I'm not getting as much exercise though.
Well, some can't do the hills.
David, what would be the typical user of this route?
Um, I mean, you're going to have to have some comfort level in riding on city streets or streets, you know, to, to ride on this, but not necessarily, it is, it is the, it is a flat route in Jefferson City and so, you know, certainly, for instance, we had the, the, you know, the Halaya Cycling Club, you know, they'll ride out and so those are high school kids, you know, so, I mean, it's not impossible for, for someone who's relatively new to cycling to ride this route. I mean, it's, and I think one thing, I mean, kind of the history, I mean, this has been a route that cyclists have right, have ridden, you know, like I mentioned, you know, this, it was, was a cycling route 20 years ago when I started at the city. And so, I, it seems as if people are, are used to the fact that there are cyclists on the road. We're not suddenly introducing them to roads that have not seen cyclists or to motorists who haven't encountered them. So, I, I think we're in some ways formalizing what already exists, we're not creating something new.
Well, this, this also, I, I've ridden this several times and it gets you to Frog Hollow, which is an exciting road.
It is nice, yeah, yeah. Going from.
Downhill.
From, from Rock Ridge down to the bottom, that is a nice route.
Uh-huh.
So.
Do we have to put the Mayus full lane on there? I mean, why don't you put on there, hey, keep to the sides of cars to pass safely?
Well.
Us don't like it at all.
Right, and so, I mean, ultimately what we're trying to do is, is create an understanding that, that it probably isn't safe for a vehicle to try to pass a cyclist without using the passing lane as you would be passing a car. There just isn't enough, you know, the, the Rock Ridge, for instance, is 22 feet wide and so that's 11 feet. And so, if you have a car that's seven-ish feet wide and a cyclist who would occupy, you know, three feet of space, you know, suddenly that's, you know, that's everything and that would be, you know, you know, the guy brushing the cyclist with his mirror. So, what the sign is trying to encourage folks to do is realize that there simply isn't enough space to, to not pass a cyclist as you would be passing another vehicle, whether it be a car or a tractor or whatever. And so, you know, I think that's what the sign is intended to do is to.
It's pushing them over on the other side.
Correct.
Well, then that makes it dangerous for two cars coming to hit that on possibly too, so.
Well, I mean, given the fact that the cyclist is probably moving somewhere between 10 and 18.
Motorists can give the bicyclist respect, it needs to go both ways. Bicyclists should maintain a speed of like 40 miles per hour on the road. I mean, I don't know, we can be here all day, David, if you guys are firing.
If they had, if they had an e-bike, they might be able to get there downhill with a 20 mile an hour tailwind.
Okay.
I'm sure if I's got other stuff to do, sit and listen to me, complain about it.
I'll make a motion.
We got new ambulances that can come up.
That's right. So, what we're asking for is just approval to allow the city to install the signs.
I'll make a motion to approve the J.C. Bike Loop signing on county roadways.
I will second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I'd have one of those today. Sorry, David.
Now, I feel important now that I got.
Okay, we're gonna keep moving along here.
We were going so good.
Okay, the 40 hours extension of COVID lease. Leave.
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 This is just renewing what we've been doing, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And consider maybe it's time to stop. It's up to you guys, this is definitely a volunteer.
I'm okay with keeping it going.
Well, we, we're on record as approving the COVID premium, or.
Premium pay.
Well, it's, it's ARPA actually, premium pay for the payroll, current payroll period, plus two more? Is that where we are?
Yes.
Okay. I, so, we're already on record for doing that. I would assume that this 40-hour extension could coincide with, with that because it's sort of the same dynamics affecting both, right?
Right, the COVID, the COVID pay is, is purely voluntary. As you remember, the federal mandate ended in December 31 of 20 at this point and, well, 21.
21.
And, no, 20, December 31 of 20, we considered, we continued it voluntarily off and on, but for the motive, most part, all of 21 and then you voted to continue it until a decision was made to the contrary. And so, this is, at this point, it was initially mandated under federal law for 80 hours up to 80 of COVID pay or COVID-related pay for people that were missing work. You voluntarily extended it for 22 for up to 40 hours for those that had not utilized that pay in previous occasions. And so, our numbers have been declining, we've been tracking it. We track it not by weeks, but by pay periods. So, starting on the first of the year, we had 15 documented cases for the first payroll or for the payroll dated January 20th. I don't know if you're interested in the man-hours, but 15 cases of people that had not utilized pay that did turn in documentation, proof of positive tests, 15 for the payroll dated 1/20, we had 30 for the payroll dated 2/3, so obviously Christmas gatherings and stuff kind of ramped that up, 10 for the payroll dated 2/17 for the payroll that will be issued this week. We only had six cases documented of people that had not utilized any of the pay before. We assume there are some cases where people are simply not letting us know because they've already utilized the pay, but it's low, we're hoping, because we're not hearing about it. And then so far, I sent out an email last week asking all elected officials and department heads to account for any current cases that are known. And as of Friday, well, as of close of business yesterday, I have none for this current two-week pay period. So, it's obviously on a downward trend. This is purely voluntary, this is not out of ARPA funds, this is up to 40 hours of COVID pay. So, my recommendation would be that we look at perhaps discontinuing this amount at, at perhaps the same day that we discontinue, or at least that we will only approve the premium pay through, which would be the last check in March.
I'd just keep continuing it just because somebody hadn't used it yet. If they just happened to get it, they got lucky before or whatever, then they get it, say in a month and we discontinue it, I mean, I think they should have it at their disposal as well. I don't know how many people haven't used it, it may be very minimal.
I haven't checked that, but I could.
Well, it's there if they need it. Yeah, I think.
I'm okay with extending it.
So, do you wanna go, keep, just have it follow the premium pay for now?
I would say we'd look at this at the same time we look at premium pay, which is at the end of March. Is that right?
Correct, yeah. Yeah, it's scheduled, so far it's approved through the final check in March, which is 3/31, so we would want to review it the week before.
Okay.
At some point, it's gonna have to end, I, I agree, but for right now, well, according to TV, there's a war going on and COVID disappeared, so.
Imagine that.
We should be all right, right? But no, so, so what do you need a motion to?
Continue it.
Continue it through what date you wanna go through, the same as the premium pay?
Let's do that.
What was that date then?
March.
Check date, 3/31.
Yeah.
Okay, make a motion to extend it through check period 3/31, the 40-hour, what did we call it?
It's COVID, that is what we've been referring to.
Yeah.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Did you get that okay, Don?
I was kinda, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Signing of engagement letter with Williams Keepers LLC.
So, Williams Keepers has started the preliminary audit. They will be here the first week of April and also the first week of May. We paid them $54,000 last year, so that's the same amount that's in this current engagement letter. The letter just outlines our responsibilities versus theirs for the audit.
Good. Are you abstaining or?
Did I abstain last year?
I didn't abstain last year.
I'll.
I didn't know if you had any connection with them anymore or not.
I have no financial interest in them, but I am going to abstain anyway.
Okay, I'll leave it up to you, so, make a motion to sign the engagement letter with Williams Keepers.
I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Okay. Discussion of Ameren UE replacement of gas lines in the downtown area. I added that, we're, they're gonna be doing this work, I don't, what, what is the timeframe, Greg? But it's gonna be affecting Commercial Way, I think it's gonna be going down Adams.
I talked to Chris, I'm not even trying to pronounce his last name, yesterday, they are replacing gas line downtown. And forgive me if I'm saying this wrong, they're going from a standard pressure system to a high-pressure system, which means they're gonna be putting new meters, regulators at the buildings instead of, like right now, we just got meters, we don't have any regulators, which means they're gonna be doing all new gas line up around uptown. They were gonna be. They were gonna be coming through Commercial Way, boring, but they will have to dig across to get to several buildings. They'll try to bore from the alley up this side to the annex, and then they're gonna have to put two new gas meters for the old jail and new jail. Or, new courthouse, or courthouse, sorry. They're gonna keep me in the loop when they're gonna be coming through the alley. These are probably a week and a half to two weeks.
And this is gonna affect parking, so.
They're coming.
Anybody has issues, call Jeff.
They're coming on this side of the alleyway. So, it's not gonna be as bad as originally, they were gonna go on the church side, but there's too much in the way, they're gonna have to come on this side for the new gas line. I've already talked to them about that.
So, they're gonna, they're gonna actually come into the parking lot, uh?
Yeah, they've gotta run a new gas line from alley up to our building and up to.
Courthouse. Got it.
So, well, we know ahead of time, so people who park in those spaces know to.
Chris and I have been talking, yes.
Okay. Fine.
Well, yeah, I'm talking to Greg, although we found out now we're supposed to be paying for the state spaces in the state parking lot, but some of this.
No, no, that's not gonna happen.
No, but, I mean, I was gonna say, we could, we could move the state employees down there, but.
Who's what, what? We're paying for state employees' parking?
No, no.
No, we're not.
Although we were, it was inquired, uh, you know, we have state employees in the courthouse.
Correct, yeah.
And, um, when they asked to have their parking tags replaced, because they've been, they're 20 years old and they're falling apart, uh, and they had noticed that their tags were different color than other tags, OA FMDC said, oh, by the way, we'll send you the lease for, uh, 20-plus parking spaces at $40 a shot, and county, you can pay for that, but that's not gonna happen. We met with them. I met with them last week, and, uh, that's not gonna happen. It's the parking garage, uh, down on the corner of State and Monroe?
Yeah. Yeah, it's a statewide.
When are they doing all this, like, soon?
No, I guess we, uh, some of us are gonna just have to hoof it a little bit for some period of time as they, uh, impede our parking spaces.
Chris said he'll keep it down to minimum, but.
Hoof it from where?
Well, that's, that's for you to find out, I guess. I mean, what, you know, hey, I've often said, people in Jefferson City, and I'm one of them, they're not happy unless they can park under their desk. Once in a while, you do have to walk a little bit.
I understand that, but from where, where are they?
Well.
If we have enough time, we've got some.
There, there, there are, there are street parking within walking distance.
That's all, one or two?
Like, two cars?
Yeah, that's all.
Are they coming up the middle of the parking lot then?
No, no bore underneath your car.
You hope.
Do we have any extra spaces in the Jacks, in the Adams lot?
I, you'd have to ask the parking commissioner.
No, we, we need to talk about that too, because we're gonna be needing those spots pretty soon, and we're out to give the library some heads up, so we don't just push them out.
How long timeframe are we talking on this parking? A day, two days?
Yeah.
So, one, if it's just two cars, they can just park in front of my facility, and then that solves everything, Greg.
Yeah, I mean, there, uh, when we walked through the alleyway, Chris said, we're Brian Parks, which Brian is nobody, and then Gretchen, so that's the two spots he was going to.
If you're talking two spots, just have them park in front of this chair's apartment.
Find out when they're gonna do it and give us a little heads up so we can tell, because we know whose parking places they are.
Yeah, Greg's, Greg's on top of this. That's why I put it on the agenda, so we would know and not be blindsided.
I mean, there's free parking all over the city, you gotta walk a little farther, but.
Worst comes to worst, I'm putting my truck over somewhere and making up those spots.
If you wanna park closer, you can pay, what is it, $2 a day for all-day parking?
I don't even know what you said, but I do know what you said.
Okay, just let me know, Greg, and we'll figure out whose spots they are and work with it.
Yeah, I do, that's me too. Behave. I'll send you to your room.
I know, you're gonna be.
Okay, so everybody's aware of that. Uh, first reading the budget adjustment number one.
I'm gonna put that off to the next week, I'm sorry.
Okay. Signing of the 2022, 2023 DWI Highway Safety Grant Application.
So, uh, these are the same grants that we sign every year, uh, it's the HMV, hazardous moving grant and the DWI grant. The, uh, DWI is, uh, $7,505, and HMV is $5,000. Part of the HMV grant is sending two people to elect that, elect that conference, which has to do with all this stuff, so. There's actually two places, Sam has to sign on the first page, and then all three of you have to sign on the second page. To my knowledge, you don't have to initial all the pages. I'm trying to find that out.
Thank you.
It would be cool if you did, I think that would be funny.
What, what does the DWI saturation enforcement mean?
So, back in the day, we used to do checkpoints, but thanks to social media, uh, that doesn't do any good anymore. So, what, and it's actually more efficient to do Wolfpacks. So, we'll send three or four people out in their specific position. Their specific job will be to, uh, try to find the impaired drivers.
They used to do it on Jeff Elscher's birthday.
They go to areas that we've had, uh, high incidents, crashes, you know, 54, Route B's got a couple spots on there. So, we have, we have a map that we use that we will hit on.
And these are 100% grant?
Yes.
I'm just gonna find somebody else to drive for you. Either that or sheriff will find somebody to give you a ride. Might not take you home.
You gotta drink and drive, we'll provide the chases.
There you go.
I'll, um, offer a motion to sign the 2022-2023 DWI Highway Safety Grant Application.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A motion to sign the 2022-2023 HMV Highway Safety Grant Application.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And I'm actually gonna take those from you and take them over, we have to get them mailed them. As far as Dawn knows, we will make copies and bring them to her.
I'm gonna let you find her.
Hey, that's between you, that's between you and Dawn.
I said, as far as you know.
Okay. Discussion of painting RFP for EMS.
So, uh, next two items on the agenda.
Here, screw it up.
This is a RFP for painting the inside of our quarters there at South Ridge. Uh, this was in our 2022 capital item. We just need to run an RFP to go ahead and get that process started, so just looking for approval for that. The second item, and I don't, do we need a motion? Okay.
No, I don't think so, but are we gonna get anybody to bid this? It's gonna be like upstairs.
Can you piggyback off the bid if there's?
President, they wanna do it.
How much, how much is it gonna be, is it?
We have no idea.
No, I mean, um, um, what area was it again, I'm sorry, Eric?
Uh, it's basically from the back of our bay, you know, the offices, the crew quarters, the back rooms, the training area.
Not the bay itself, so you got, we got standard height in there.
Yep. So.
Jessica, get with me, and we'll, we'll try to make some phone calls to try to see if we can get some more bids on this, because we didn't have any bids the last time.
We just had a walkthrough with him, so I don't know if we, we can technically piggyback off of it.
So, let me know, Jessica, and we'll see if we can get, get some more interest in it, so.
So, do we need a motion for the bid?
I don't think so, not for, not for.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think we have a motion on all the other ones like we did the approvals of this morning, so.
Fair enough.
I'm, I'm good with going out to bid and just holler at me when you get it ready. Get with Home Builders Association, maybe try to find some painters and.
Yeah.
And then the next item, uh, we approved new station furniture for all of our stations, so new recliners and new mattresses. That comes back over the, the threshold amount, so we do need to go out for bid. None of that was available on, uh, government service contracts or on a sole source. So, these are unique in that they're built for station use only. Made of higher quality, more durability, so we asked to go out to bid for that, and that is, again, in our capital budget for 2022.
Is this comparable, comparable to the furniture in a fire station?
Yeah, so it's actually fire station furniture. Uh, it was, who initially we were gonna engage, but we found out that they're not on a government contract, so we do need to submit for bid.
Okay.
Okay.
Hey, before you get away, talking about painting, when we were talking about the ambulances, one thing that came up was the color, which I really liked the color. I thought it was something different, and we were able to kind of, I don't know, it took it away from being the old Capitol Region ambulance, so. One thing that was mentioned, though, was that, that dark color also absorbs heat. So, are we looking at?
Yeah, so the bid specs.
On that?
The bid specs were written as white, so it'd be a white base, but we'd keep the same graphics. So, right now, it's a blue base with white graphics. We'd go white base with, with blue graphics on this one, so it'd just be an inversion, which I think would look really good.
Not only a heat issue, but just to wipe them clean is a big issue with the dark, isn't it?
What we're seeing now is, uh, not necessarily scratches in the paint, but scratches in the clear coat and the finish, um, with that dark color, everything's visible. And we, when you look at the Osages, even though they're older ambulances, they don't show some of those imperfections as much. And, you know, it's something simple as, you know, driving down somebody's driveway, you know, getting a bush up against the side of the ambulance that, you know, now you got some imperfections.
Yeah, I got black cars in there, that's.
Okay.
Okay.
We were talking about painting, I just thought about that.
Here, I'm gonna give you my, this says County House, County General Hospital, but it does say county, so you can have my, my fire and my ambulance.
I didn't know I was getting a present.
Yeah, there's a present.
He said, I'll do that next time he wants another ambulance, so there you go.
Yeah, well, there it is, yeah.
But yes, the bid, to answer the question, the bid was written as a white ambulance base.
Okay. We're good with both those, anything else?
I should've turned this in at the beginning, but this was, uh, an annual statement from RAC. They submitted it and turned it in to you guys, perhaps because of domestic shelter stuff. So, it's just a, their annual statement. We went to the clerk, and I think I emailed you guys a copy.
Yeah, you did.
So, where are we at on the generator project for the health department? Kirsty emailed about that, and Greg snuck out.
I sent it on to Greg to see where we were.
Were we bidding that out, or did we have, trying to get a grant on that?
I think Chris had re, I think Chris had been working on it, but.
It's, it's, uh, Christie asking us to, or is it from, yeah, Christie asking us to ask Greg about it.
Yeah, and I forwarded that on to Greg and just said, where are we on this? So, I figure hopefully he'll get back to Chris.
Okay. Think that is the only thing, um, as I said, we're gonna have to start talking about that parking lot when we were.
The Carnegie?
No, um, well, 207, 209 Adams.
That's next week, is it on the agenda next week?
Yeah, 'cause we're having issues with people parking in there and parking in some of those spots that are reserved for either county employees or even for the library, so we don't have signs on the middle ones, and the numbers are kind of wore out. There's a big sign when you come in there, but, um, we talked about putting signage up there.
Well, the city has a standard sign that you can obtain that said, parking by permit only, subject to towing, that, and it cites the, the ordinance on it, that's probably.
We've added some signs up there that say numbered signs are reserved, and we've got the city code. Did you, who do we call on that city, or do you?
Well, I think the problem is, is that the library parking is still public parking.
Some of it is.
Yeah, so some of the, some of the spots are public parking, and people aren't paying attention in parking wherever.
The outer ones along Capitol, I believe, are all, uh, public library patrons parking, the numbered spots, and the ones with the signs along the building are all reserved. And, I'm, we're not, I don't know who's parking in the wrong spots all the time, but.
They'll never reduce their payment, are you two spots this time?
Yeah, we took those while we were working on the, uh, building, right outside where that garage door's gonna go, so they lost two spots. Yeah, you put that on my desk, so.
Okay.
And I, I don't know, at some point, we may just wanna go ahead and get the wheels turning on that to let them know they need to start figuring out some other place to park or.
Well, we, we know, we should sign each, each spot, so there's no misunderstanding. If it's, it's, if, if, if it's a library patron spot, it should be so noted. It's not a library employee, and it's not a county employee spot. It is for someone who is at the library, but doesn't work there.
So, we talked about putting some in between the middle rows, because that's, I think, where we're having the main problems. If you put the post and sign there, sign on each side, I think that would help with the problem. But when we talked about it, it would create a problem pushing snow. So, we either put signs up and just don't push that parking lot, uh, as clean, or?
It's either that or we'll have to use just a skid steer over there to remove the snow, which Greg does have one of our skid steers, but he would have to be responsible for that parking lot. We consulted, but you wouldn't wanna plow it, you'd wanna skid steer it and push it all off to one corner, because otherwise, you're gonna be pushing all the snow right up to the side.
So, I was all right putting the signs up, but then when we talked about that, that kind of created a problem, so we were just trying to work it out to see if it was maybe the same person, and we're getting different people at different times, just pull in there, and they don't read the signs, like, just like driving down Osage City in a tractor trailer.
How many spaces over there are still library spaces?
Uh, probably 20, close to it.
Debbie, do you know how many we still lease from the city?
Oh, or at least that many, there's 29 of that, that, that they're paying for.
29, okay. Yeah, I guess they had 10 in the middle.
Use the spaces if we claim them all?
Yeah, and I think that was the intention at some point, was using all of that, but we're trying to give the library time.
And we'll, we'll, we're still looking for, for places for the sheriff's department, so.
Well, we can't, the problem we have for library patrons, we can't enforce it. Because if somebody walks to the library, walks in and walks out, they're a patron, so they can park there. So, there's no way to be able to force those up there, so. I mean, you're, you're talking about a difficult time.
No, if somebody parks in a reserved parking place, because it says right there, spots 1 through 10 are county employees parking.
Do you have a permit on the side of the car or anything? Because it, that's the other thing.
There's numbers on the ground.
No, I mean, on the vehicle, so we know that vehicle's supposed to be there, it's not supposed to be there.
Well, when they send me an email and say somebody's been in their parking place all day, and then they come back from lunch and somebody's in their parking place, so.
Can't we paint county parking only on the pavement? I mean, I know that's gonna wear off, but I'm, it, at least if.
I think two things.
They don't pay attention to behind here, so.
Well, I know, and I, you have a.
I think we either make it all county parking, or we put up signs on each parking.
You got them out of the seat.
I think you mentioned that, actually specifying this.
We are planning to overlay that lot or at least seal it this summer. And we're gonna bid that work with our overlay contract. So, we might wanna think on what we want that to be, and we'll do it after we do that. So, if there's striping, if there's ways to stripe it and make it work, um, that's fine.
I think we just need to take them all for the, for county parking, really.
But that, boy, that leaves the library in a pickle, so.
I know, I'm sorry.
We might be able to brainstorm a little bit on our end, on some ideas and get our.
When you have mixed use like that, you're, you're just gonna have problems unless we put a sign on every parking place, and then.
And then you put a permit on every car that's supposed to be there, because my, my, my staff's, we would not be able to tell who's supposed to be there or not, and I can't take his word that he's supposed to be parked there. It could be an ex-boyfriend, ex-girlfriend saying, yeah, that's my spot, and that guy's parked there. So, then we'd have to do a verify, you're talking about time consuming, and like you say, when you have mixed parking, it's gonna be tough to enforce.
The cleanest way would be county parking, county employee parking only.
And have some kind of permit thing hanging in there so we can verify, like I said.
Or you could keep, keep the, the library, they could at least have it for their staff, and that way, they have, you know, and then do away with the patron parking.
So, there's city parking just down that alley where some of our employees, do we still use those? So, basically, the ones that we use, they would basically have to rent from there or find other places to rent from.
We need to discuss that, because that, that really will would create an issue with the library.
How many library patron spaces are there?
Probably ten.
In our lot?
Yes. Patron? Patron.
No, 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 no.
The ones along the building are reserved for employees, and I think the ones in the middle are reserved for employees, and then the patrons' parking is on the outside along Capitol.
Right, okay. So, that's my question, how many patron parking spaces are there?
We'd have to go count.
Well, and if there, aren't there spaces in the alley that, that face into the library? Maybe they ought to make that patron and have their people, it looks like their employees park there. Maybe their employees move over there, we can put a tag on the employee car. You can't put a tag on a patron's car. But there's a way to solve this without, you know, without a nuclear option, I think.
Yeah, it's, yes, since I'm over there, there's, it's, parking is, is an issue.
There's always street parking, too.
I know, but that's, even the street parking is, is between the Chamber of Commerce, having, having meetings, and those spaces are, are pretty much used during the day.
The parking meters are perfect for a patron, because a patron doesn't sit there all day. They're not perfect for a employee who's going to be gone for eight hours from the car.
Maybe just make our lot just for patron, just for employees.
It's an issue if you want to park under your desk.
It's an issue because the county really never had any place for parking. This is very nice that we have places for parking. Mostly, we're at the mercy of the city for parking, but we've always paid the city for our parking spots. Now, we actually have a, have a spot that the county owns, so this is good.
Well, maybe we need to talk to Claudia and just see if we made that lot just employee parking and take away the patron parking, that would maybe give us some more spaces. And what, as Harry said, there is that lot right there off Commercial. I don't know if that's employee parking, or if it's patron parking. If it's employee parking, they need to maybe perhaps move them over into that lot, too.
Well, if we do permit parking, we can call the county parking lot and give them however many tags.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And.
Yeah. But I, I, we need to, I don't want to blindside the library, so.
No, but if we give them a month or, you know, some kind of notice, then they can figure something out.
Yeah.
Just like we have to. Anytime we add a judge, then we have to add about three more employees and find parking places for them. So, you know, we've got to figure it out, so, you know, anybody else should have to deal with it, too. It's our parking lot, last time I looked.
It is.
Yeah.
It is.
I think just take care of ourselves first.
We're just trying to be a good neighbor to the library.
We are. We've been letting them have those twenty-nine or twenty-seven spots.
They pay.
Right?
Yeah. Okay.
But I think that was with the understanding, it wasn't going to be there forever.
Yeah, well, I'll talk to Claudia, too. Maybe we can even have them come to a meeting and see if we can work out an issue.
They'll waste their time at a meeting. We'll figure out what we're going to do.
Well, we'll see what we can work out. Okay, anything else?
Motion to stand and recess until four-thirty.